Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who will minutes? Any corrections?
I'm going to approve.
The motion to approve, your second?
Second.
Your second, all bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approve agenda, you mean to add?
Approve.
The motion to approve, your second?
Second.
Your second, all bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Roger.
Got a couple estimates here for tearing up and replacing the sidewalk going off towards Levers. One from Johansson Construction for nineteen forty-seven, and one from Elthoff Concrete for twenty-seven thirty-seven. And we had replaced this area we're going to replace about fifteen years ago. And we left the old stuff alone back then, about two-thirds of the way down. We have older concrete that's still in great shape. So we'll be replacing the new stuff again and leaving the old stuff alone. I guess the old adage is they don't make them like they used to. But we'll put rebar in at this time, and we did not do that before. So I think we should eliminate a couple places where it cracked. In the spring it really heaved. So we should eliminate that, and that's the biggest issue. Moisture getting in there. So.
That's the section of walk between, coming out between buildings?
Yes.
The walk over?
Yep, the handicap door, like I said, about two-thirds of the way down towards Levers. We'll replace that.
We'd like the motion to approve the accept a little bit.
And the motion to approve the concrete bid, the second? That's second, got it?
Did your dad today?
Yeah.
Any, any discussion? Any other questions? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Roger?
No, that's all I have for now.
Those water problems, did we get?
Still waiting on estimates. Got some from one company here, but still waiting for another one.
We all wait for them in.
When, yeah, when I get estimates, we'll come back.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin.
Okay, updates on our projects, they have started drilling. Yesterday they started drilling, they grabbed the Ramsey County, Hellsing County line, Salt of Doian. They are having their blade operator spread it since they do maintenance on that road. He's getting it spread the way he wants to, just so you know. Uh, pavement patches are supposed to be done by the end of this month. They haven't started yet. And the slip line on the culvert on Ramsey Three is done. If anybody wants to look at that, that is a pretty cool project.
Looks good?
That does, yeah. Water's flowing through there after all the rain.
Move very long.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, like plastic things sticking out the ends, is that something for like a guide or?
Well, like the one-inch pipe maybe?
Yeah.
When they grab the very ends shut so the water, you know, the liners are just a little bit smaller than the original culvert. So then there's that space there that we don't want water traveling through, so they grab it shut full of concrete. They put those pipes in there so the air can leak back out. So yeah, I guess. May have to cut those off a little shorter, cap it again.
I saw that, I was like, what are those, were they, were they a old shield up when they, you know, they pulled them on earlier? I wasn't sure what they were for.
It's a type of vent for when they grow the patch. Any questions on the projects?
I have one question, I was driving on Kelly Four today. So there's pavement markings where we're gonna do patches, correct?
Uh, like pink marks?
Yeah, pink marks, the lines in between. Do we have any plans to do anything with the bridge up there?
That's on my list of things to talk about.
Oh, there you go. Proceed then.
Before it's way up on, uh?
Yeah, the bridge shelf, the bridge is there. And then we have, because I would assume, I don't know if who's driven that rule, but that, where we put the culvert in there.
That's part of the.
That's part of the paving project too, obviously. So I was just wondering if we plan on doing anything since we're gonna be up in that neck of the woods anyway.
We did, we did fill those holes with asphalt.
Yeah, I, I saw that. It's pounding out already, obviously, because of the trucks coming over.
Those planks are moving on that, and we can't get them to anchor down.
That's kind of what I'm hearing, yeah.
On that bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a wood plank bridge with wood head walls in it and everything.
There's a kind of design that's free float in there, and then you're not supposed to put anything on top of them. But we have asphalt on top, but so every time they flow with play, it just breaks asphalt.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, borrowing ahead on our federal aid project for like Ramsey County Two next year. They said we can go as far ahead as we want, but a lot of people go two or three years ahead.
They do.
But of course, you know, the consequence of that, you don't have federal aid dollars for those years. But that, that is a possibility to do that, and he said the money's available, so.
When do we have to speak for them? When do we have to speak for, like six months in advance or a year or?
Yeah, good question. I would say when you're getting a program, so probably in October, but they'll wanna know how many years you want to borrow ahead. At the convention. They'll wanna know at the convention.
What did we have talked about last time? One year anyway, wasn't it?
Yeah, what, do we, do we have, uh, do we have the numbers on what the years would be? An estimate?
I do, that's on our program sheet. We have for twenty twenty, an estimated five hundred and eighty-one thousand. And if we go another year, we'll gain two hundred and, no, this isn't a perfect number, but roughly two hundred and thirty-five thousand if we borrow ahead another year. That, that varies with whatever money's available, but that's the full estimate. The five eighty-one is pretty firm. But the two thirty-five, if we borrow ahead, that's about what we're gonna be, is at two thirty, so.
So eight, eight hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So does that five eighty-one include the twenty nineteen money?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's right around two forty a year, so we're gonna get probably, we're getting half of that five eighty-one next year regardless.
Yep. Next year, this year we would've got the.
Yeah.
Next year we'll get the five eighty-one. Does that make sense? If we, if we didn't want to use it this year, we'd have got the two forty.
We didn't use it this year.
We did use it this year. So were you and, were you planning on using that twenty nineteen money in the budget, in the, in the project next year? And that's already budgeted in, right?
I budgeted that, yes.
Okay. And the twenty twenty money was already budgeted in too?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So if we wanted to borrow ahead, then basically we can go, we can go into maybe twenty twenty-one, get that two thirty-five.
Correct.
And we could probably do like twenty twenty-two, because that's a couple years ahead of that.
Yep.
And that would be probably in that same ballpark, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be.
Yeah, when I, when I worked out my budget, I used the five eighty-one as income, as revenue.
Yeah, let's go on and we'll come back to that. We should probably hammer that on a little more and talk about it.
Okay, so that, that's probably our next item, is we need to update this, um, program sheet. I don't know if they got copies, this came in the mail. Did you get one? Something we do every year. This is, we meet in October the seventh for, that was secondary roads, we have to update this every year.
Oh, yeah.
So now this is the time that we need to do it now this year, so we're ready for October. And it's pretty, you know, our next project is of course Ramsey Two out here next year. And two years after that is Salt of Hamlet, ten miles of paving. So nothing will probably change here, but this is where they have, also have bridges on our program. That's where I'd like to put a hole in bridge in where that bridge is on the board. It's on a federal aid route, paved road, but it's still gonna be a little tough to get programmed because this is sufficiency rating is low, which has some bearing on whether funded or not. But it also says it's not deficient. In order, in order to qualify for federal funding, it has to be either deficient or, there's one other term they use too that I can't remember. And it's neither one of those right now. So we either got, we'll have to get it re-inspected or something, but it takes about two or three years to get these programmed with all the environmental issues and that kind of stuff right away. So if we do it, start putting it on there now, it probably wouldn't get, best case scenario, probably wouldn't be till twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. So it'll give us some time to think about it and talk about it too, but sooner we get it programmed.
You have to get it inspected to get it changed.
But that's never a problem, it's just, they charge us a hundred bucks, the state DOT does, and they charge us a hundred bucks to do them. We just ask them to see if they can be deficient.
And there is something on late for something like that then?
Yeah. You know, that'll give us some time to do it. All the labor work that needs to be done, plus, you know, getting the funding, figuring out some.
Are there bridges we need to look at?
We're getting, we got one down a bridge for probably fifteen years, so we just, not that many left to do. So this is probably a good candidate for the time of federal aid.
That's okay, you're all welcome to come in and.
It's on the federal aid route and it's a paved road.
Anything else there?
No, so I guess we did a signature from the chairman there, so motion that, once we have that bridge, if we want to do that, the mess has to be filled in, signed by the chairman before the October seventeenth or.
So until we can do a, on our first meeting in October?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, October first. You want, can you fill it in or you can?
I can fill it in.
Okay. David, you want to motion that?
Yeah, we should probably motion that that bridge.
So basically, we're just gonna add the bridge and keep, keep the ham in the road for twenty twenty-two?
Yep, this is, a lot of the time the bridge projects are totally another pool of money.
Now, just to make sure, if I didn't lose track, we're talking about the bridge we're having inspected, right?
No, 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 the other bridge.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was flagging people out.
No, this one is on, on Tony Four about.
Oh, when you were talking.
Two and a half miles south of seventeen, something like that.
Approximately, yeah. Now, it's over South of Church, it's very underwater.
Well, we can always flip the designation in a year or something if we find that we need to do something with that other bridge, but the hope is that, that would be okay.
That's the money I want for.
Yeah, just to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, it's such a long, uh, lead down on the bridge.
You want to make a motion then, but doesn't apply.
Add that bridge to our program sheet.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, motion in the second to add the bridge to the program sheet, there is discussion. All bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Can I ask one thing, is it possible we can still do something to try to, you know, I know you said it shifted around and stuff, but maybe when they go up and do the over, you know, the patches, if we could maybe lay some stuff into the bridge or something? To try to keep it a little bit better condition if we're gonna, and then, you know, they'll kind of buy us some time until hopefully we can get the thing replaced.
We'll stay on top of the approaches, so on the, on the, that's the worst part.
Yeah, you don't wanna get it on the bridge because of.
Right, yeah.
The way it's written, it won't stay. But yeah, the approaches, it seems, where, where it's shifting back and forth is where the holes are diving in. We can just kind of feather it out and try and make it move together for a couple more years then.
Okay, good.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm doing roads conference in Rapid City. It's October fifteenth through the seventeenth. Registration's a hundred dollars and rooms are a hundred and ninety-five. I guess I'd like permission to go to out-of-state travel.
Sure. Just one in the second, to out-of-state travel, all bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I had a call on, um, whether or not Ramsey County honors our ten percent, that ten percent weight exemption permit for movement of farm products from the field to initial point of storage. And we have not taken action on that, I don't know if that's something we're interested in doing or not, but I did have a call on that, and I thought I'd bring it up to meetings, so. It only, that permit only honors the overweight from, you know, from the field to the first initial point of storage. And that takes mission, action. At this point, if a farmer got pulled over by an HP or somebody like that, they would have to, even if they get out the permit, since HPs haven't been informed to honor that permit, they would get charged. But once we take action, we have to let them know that we are honoring it.
What are the counties around this doing?
Well, that's a good question. I assume that they all honor it, I mean, it's just from the field to initial point, it's not from anything beyond that.
We have never done this before?
I think one year since I've been here, but I honestly keep forgetting about it, to be, tell the truth.
What do you think about it?
It's happening. I don't know if we wanna try and control it or not, it's up to you guys, but. And I, I would imagine there wouldn't be that many times they were pulled over, but.
Question, does it, you know, if we approve that, is there a new limit that they're given? Or is there no limit in terms of getting it from the field and the story?
Is it ten percent over or?
Oh, ten percent.
What they're licensed for?
Yeah, so like regular, regular, eighteen millimeter is gonna be eighty-eight thousand, ten percent over.
If it's their license for ninety-six, then ten percent of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess most people are probably all in eighty-eighty, but they'll do it.
I'm sure there are, you know.
Maybe not now, because it's what I hope.
How long would we put this in place, Kevin?
Uh, it goes off at restrictions, otherwise, you know, harvest isn't going on that whole time, but.
We hope not.
Right.
Wouldn't hold my breath this year.
If anything on the roads restrictive, it doesn't spring break up, then it's, it's no longer out.
I'll have to fill in the commission.
I think it's probably being done already anyway, so I'd go ahead and make that note.
Motion in the second for ten percent weight exemption? Any other discussion? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I will notify the HPs. And I need to buy six front tires for three motor grinders, and the most that I got, we, our plan is to trade these off next year, so the most that I got is probably a good enough tire for this, this situation is a hundred and, or a thousand and eighty-five dollars each, including the mounting and the open overings.
Now, that must be pretty good.
Yeah, the other grids were fourteen eighty-five and sixteen forty-two, so four hundred dollar savings on one tire.
I'll make a motion to approve the one, fully on the tire.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the little bit on the motor grider tires, is there a second?
All second.
Your second, any other discussion? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Another interesting one, I got the quotes for the chips, and it was a tie. Both got on the inch, got a quarter seventeen fifty a ton, delivered to Devil Lake. And I talked to Strata, they've already railed theirs in here, so they're sitting on the ground already, which is convenient for me, I don't have to wait for them. I want to start hauling to our, uh, storage sites the first of Oc, well, right around the first of October, so two weeks or three weeks from now. And Gallowen said they could start hauling to our, our shop site as soon as we let them know, but they, you know, it'd take them a while to get them here, of course.
What do we do? Have you ever had this happen before?
Normally we flip a quarter.
That's what I was. Really? Yeah. Maybe you want to ask them to redo it?
Yeah, you can get a better price, I never even thought of that.
Have an auction?
It could go this way too. The only advantage of Strata does, they've got ahead and railed theirs in already, and that's pretty convenient for me, but however you guys wanna handle it. I know in the past we flipped quarters many times.
I make a motion that we flip a quarter.
I wonder if we could, just before you make the motion, do I throw in, split the bid, that'll be cut out, third of that.
I could certainly do a little bit on that, that would work too.
I mean, we wanna keep these people happy, because somehow.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Well, as long as their, their pricing is the same, I think that'd be, I think that, yeah, I think that'd be reasonable. You know, unless they gave us that seventeen fifty a ton, um, based on the amount that you were asking for.
Yeah, the price.
It might be, the price would go up if you were buying less from both.
I'd make the motion that we, uh, I may ask them to split the, the contract and give it to both of them, get it.
Are you gonna add a contingency to that, about what to do if they?
If they want, yeah. I'd say them flip the contract.
Okay, well then I'll retract my motion.
Okay, that'll work. Yep, I'm all right with that. Everybody else? Got a second on that one?
Second.
Kevin, you all right with that?
I am, absolutely, I agree.
Okay, we have a motion in the second on the price for the, I would bid on, uh, chips. Any other discussion? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
That's all I got.
And then bidding process of the new motor grider, did we?
Oh, I should get that one. Yeah, I'm just putting specs together now, so I got, well, probably at the next meeting I'll have those put together, get them reviewed, and then we'll make a motion to, um.
Add the price.
Did you hear any more about the bridge, South of Church Ferry?
No, we, he did. Do you wanna talk about that, or me do?
Well, you can, and then I'll follow up.
We did get a contract from, well, you guys knew that, now we've, um, Jim Wang has put together a, a agreement.
We got a, we got a contract submitted to us to look at from this, um, Collins Engineers, kind of their standard contract would be who's choice a lot, they have Illinois, so we were gonna say North Dakota would be the choice a lot, looks like pretty standard contract. The only thing is Mr. Wayne, he felt me today, indicated his thoughts would be a one-third Ramsey share, two-third Betsy, Benton County share for the cost. And of course, as Kevin said this morning, today.
Yeah.
It might not actually be beneficial to go that type of a cost arrangement, based on the amount of time. So if it's, say, a twenty-dollar project and three hours are in Ramsey and seventeen are in Benton, it might not be a good idea to go with that cost share. So I believe Kevin was gonna follow up and find out if he could break it down that way.
Yeah, and they can break it down, but we have to change some of the wording in the contract.
Then it would have to change.
Are the bridges the same length, Kevin, or no?
Uh, no, they're not the same length.
That could be a.
Hours maybe more, we don't know, I mean.
Different length, different design, different things to look at, I suppose.
Ten different water depth.
Yep.
Well, wouldn't they just don't picture all of these?
You would think, yeah.
Whatever it was, they could, you know, why don't we just break it up by hours?
I'm sure they can bill it out.
Yeah, absolutely. So I need to visit with the engineering firm, see if they're willing to do that, go from there. But I mean, it could be that we pay more, who knows, you know?
Make sure you keep Benson informed, so.
Yeah.
Don't get hostile.
And as far as timeline, he, he did indicate one, it would be, uh.
Next year, right?
I'm guessing next Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
Water's gonna get cold.
Anything else? We're good, Kevin?
Yep, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that, we got the budget here, and you guys have a fifth, and you, because we did some of our own new business. Yeah, we see reentry center in progress payments on the building for the intercom and cameras. Any questions there?
Approve to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
I'll second that, but I'd like to know, is that project completed then?
No, and this isn't a full payment.
Oh, okay.
I haven't heard it completed, yeah.
Ninety-nine point nine percent complete.
Okay.
We need the mortgage. Tomorrow we're supposed to have the answer of what, because they had, they had fallen, they had done some other stuff that they weren't planning on doing, and then they have a, we're gonna get a list of the other wiring problems or potential problems that we may have later on. So we're gonna get a list, yin and the yang, and we'll put it tomorrow morning. But it is all up and running, all the cameras are on, all the intercoms are working, all of that is up, so.
Great. Okay. Glad you brought us up to speed with Mark Igoe. Any other questions? Do we want a motion on that, or take your bills separate, away from law enforcement, or does it matter, whether they can?
I don't think that.
Won't matter?
No.
Okay.
No. Or just to roll call it a little bit?
Need to roll call it all up again, man. Any other questions, you want these three bills? Some damage, or, or what? Question, do you have a motion? Can I make the motion? And do you have a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Wingfield.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
We eliminated, um, surplus property, man. Any else, anything else to put on there?
Need to declare it surplus.
Declare it surplus, need a motion to, uh.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve and clear the list surplus.
Okay. Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second? Surplus property, man. All bear say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The cars aren't aye.
We're gonna get those together and go separate, yeah?
Yeah, that's what I thought, I was just making sure.
We have to get titles and.
Well, I thought.
Anything else, new business?
Okay, if the wind and rain, you might have been able to walk under that bridge. Because, you know, the next, the next enclosure goes across that church, there's not even any water over there, it's dry. Yeah. These people that are fishing are basically fishing in a loop, because there's no water coming.
Or if they get fishy all.
No. And all that type of, it's like, that culvert's not even in the water.
They build their banks somewhere or something, or is that just the way it works?
No, it just dried up that much. Might be water coming now, but. So I was gonna go fish further down, you know, there's no water, that's.
It's a clock, we'll open the twenty twenty budget hearing, put some in the public. It's six o'clock. We'll open the twenty twenty budget hearing. It's on the public. Projected increases in taxes. I assume everybody knows what their individual taxes are and they come to the meeting, so we'll just take it from there. Anybody want to address the commission?
Are these just, are proposals or is this?
This is proposed. We've considered and talked at the last meeting, the commission did, and it's on the video if you want to watch it. You know, proposed cuts that we could make and we did come up with some that we were gonna follow through with. I believe we'll do that. And we have to finalize our budget in our next meeting, the first one in October. That's when it gets finalized and the budget's set then. But we have talked about cuts that we felt we could make. And one of the big projects we have is a road project that we're gonna do next year. And like we talked about, Kevin. You know, we think we can cut that finance in other ways other than through the taxes.
When was the last proposal increased? When was the last proposal increased? What, we had last year?
You mean previous to this year? When was the last time we had an increase or?
Yeah.
That's a very good question.
Well, you know, when I look, I'm gonna help Raymond out. When I look at yours, the true and full value went up. And when the true and full value goes up, you know, you're gonna find this percentage a little bit more. And this would have been eighteen. I mean, I can look at seventeen for you, but yeah. So when this goes up. And this goes up.
But it's gonna go up a hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents a year.
If we stay at the proposed level.
You're right, yeah.
And, and mind if I?
Oh, yeah.
Basically, where we're at right now is to get, we have, at least in my mind, we have two different levels of options. There was a valuation capture, so all of the ag land as well as the residential properties, if I remember right, we raised the residential properties slightly in the ag land slightly. So there's a, there's a capture there. So you automatically increase the values a little bit. So the same mill level from last year to this year would then be worth a little bit more. So to get down back to that level, to equal mills to last year, so it's equal taxation to last year, but with that capture would be about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get to that level on our whole budget, which is six point two million.
Yeah.
So we need to decrease around four and a half percent to get back down to last year's budget number. So decreasing mills, actually, and getting back to last year's budget number, we need to cut, what, five hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred dollars to get back to last year's budget number. Now, like Commissioner Brown said, we have discussed, at least in last meeting and now a little bit in this meeting, previous before I think you guys got here, if we can borrow ahead on our federal aid money to get the project done out on Highway Two on County Two. And if we can borrow ahead on that, then we should be able to hopefully make up pretty close to that five hundred eighty-two thousand, I think, and get down to that level because, and this would be a question for Kevin, this situation, and this is where I'm coming from. So the Hammond Road we're talking about doing in twenty twenty-two was ten miles. And we're doing fourteen miles this coming year. And that's gonna be two point one million plus the engineering.
Yep.
Is what our estimate is. So that means the Hammond Road should be one point five million plus the engineering in that range. Now, the Prairie Dog money that's gonna come in in fall of twenty twenty-one is supposed to be in the neighborhood of like one point six eight six million, I believe, something like that.
For Ramsey, yes.
For Ramsey. And we get all that in a block, correct? Do we get that all paid in twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so then that whole Hammond project can be paid for with Prairie Dog money. So we could essentially take by the heads on twenty twenty-one and probably twenty twenty-two, bank it back, and that'll give us four hundred and eighty thousand right there. So we just have to either find another hundred thousand in our existing budget or we do have the option then of possibly even asking, since they said we could go up to three years ahead for a partial on the next year. Because we know we're gonna make Prairie Dog money again, or hopefully in twenty twenty-three. And then we could fund all of our overlays and everything going forward from that, plus a slight taxation to keep, you know, maintenance enough like maintenance, not keep. Plus, hopefully, that overlay money will come through from the bridge. And that's another issue from the health insurance we've been looking at, obviously. But that would at least get our budget back in line to last year without having to take huge cuts, plus the Prairie Dog money we're pretty sure is gonna come in.
Yeah, in fact, that first bucket is almost full already, but we'd be hopeful about that.
So we can fairly, at least in my mind, easily get down to last year's number even without a lot of pain and then try to figure out how we're gonna close that other budget gap that we have in the health insurance that we're overspending on funding. And that's kind of where I'm thinking we should go, at least that's my.
Is that a good idea to borrow ahead like that?
On the federal aid money, it's gonna be there. You know, we know, we know what the figure's gonna be there for each year. So we can borrow ahead. It's all right in this situation.
Yeah, we, we usually do a project every two years, so borrowing ahead one year really makes sense, but if we're talking two years, you know, we just gotta look for another two hundred and thirty thousand.
Just Prairie Dog money, you understand that that's coming.
Yes, that's wonderful.
Yeah, and in all honesty, the only reason I suggest that we borrow ahead further than we normally would that one year is that we are fairly certain we're gonna get, we're going to receive that Prairie Dog money in twenty twenty-one and that'll cover our twenty twenty-two paving. And then we won't be paving again then until twenty twenty-four. So then we'll have twenty-three and twenty-four to bank back up again, plus the Prairie Dog money we get in twenty-three to do the twenty-four paving project. Assuming that, you know, we stay at somewhere in the same vicinity of oil price and everything fills back up again. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to borrow ahead unless we knew that money was coming.
Right.
And we're safe with it. And that's where I think we can do it. Otherwise, I would say, let's try to find more cuts in the budget, but we have some places we can wiggle around and find some additional cuts, I think. But it would be more difficult to do it that way through just a, just a department budget. Unfortunately, the easiest place to find money usually is on the roads because it's the largest portion of the budget. And it's the most expensive thing to do all the time.
But we always want good roads.
Yes.
We, we have talked about only doing half the project next year, but like Kevin says, cutting it down in half, the price is probably gonna go up.
Yeah.
To do it.
Your mobilization costs go up and everything else goes up, so it's, it's always a juggling act. How, how much do we try to accomplish, but at the same time keeping the taxes down and try to stay at a kind of an even level so we can attempt to, you know, do the things that need to be done, but not taxing much, obviously.
And Kevin, how long was the proposed project set up for? Twenty years? Is that a road?
Uh, twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years is our road rotation, so.
Hopefully, we can all, we're paved, roads paved in twenty-two years. That's the way our rotation works.
Yeah, and asphalt lifespan is generally twenty to twenty-five with good upkeep and maintenance. And then we do, you know, and we have a rotation of, we chip seal every six and crack seal, you know.
Every three years.
Every three, basically. So, I mean, we've got a pretty good program in terms of, I think, in our county, like, like Kevin said, the only one, the only stretch of road that hasn't been paved since he took over around twenty years ago or been here since twenty years ago is that Hammond Road up there, which will be done in twenty twenty-two. And that's actually still a pretty good stretch. Because that's got to go to base under it.
Really good stretch.
Well, I think this is wonderful. You can do it, but if there's a disaster or something. You know, there's a storm or whatever, we, we don't get up here and just put it. This could change if it happens.
It could. We have to plan.
Yes, sure.
One thing about their Prairie Dog money, what, twenty-one, we're gonna get that, we figured, spring of twenty-one? Everybody else is getting it too. So the contractors are gonna be busy and they're gonna get expensive. So if we pass on this project next year, we're just gonna have more costs for twenty-one on that project. It's a good idea to do it. Like I said, we've talked about doing half of it, you know, and wait a year for the other half, but it's a good idea to do it. We can swing this, I think, and it'll work out well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And east two, east of three is probably about the roughest stretch of pavement we got in the whole county.
It is, no.
East of three. Three, three empty down here is not too bad. Three from, or from, two from three to over to four is, is a pretty tough stretch of road. To the point, when I'm hauling, I don't even haul down that. I cut down through quarry because I don't get bounced around so bad over there.
Yeah, if you were gonna test all our roads for ride, then that would be worse for our.
Any other questions in the hearing?
Great.
Everything is getting older out there and, and the taxes were a lot lower when things were newer. And now that things are older, the taxes are going up and up and up. And I don't know where it's gonna end.
Know what you're saying.
It's not gonna end. It's gotta end someplace.
Yeah, a little part of that is inflation, I mean.
Inflation.
Values, values of property are going up, you know, the state is mandating that we push it out. It's gonna be, if we really don't have a hell of a lot of choice here, I mean, we have to move up. They'll only allow us a tolerance of, what, three percent? So we gotta be within that.
It's gotta stay between ninety and a hundred, depending on their valuation change.
So we just, we got our hands tied and that's why you're fooling. Grade value goes up on the properties.
Yeah, you know, all my stuff out there is twenty-five years old now and the taxes have doubled. I don't know why.
It's a tough year to swallow this. I mean, we hope to cut it back to more by the next meeting. And so the increase won't be anything substantial.
Well, I don't know.
Any other questions? Thought we got a room full.
Nice, oh.
Too nice?
Can I make a mention?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not belaboring the point. I gotta look back to the left, but to make mention to your comment, the taxation does continue to increase. But like you said, twenty-five years ago, the taxes might have been half. Well, the cost of money over that time has probably gone up seventy to eighty percent because your inflationary factors are at least two percent every year. So you're, you're pretty equal to probably that money. Plus, if you look at our traditional taxation in Ramsey County, like even back four years, five years ago, probably the year before I got into the commission, we were at like a hundred and forty-five mills. And now we're down to a hundred, looking at hopefully getting it down to around ninety-six again or even less. So we're actually at two-thirds of the taxation we were at five or six years ago with the valuation increase, but obviously in between. So we're probably still underneath that percentage on total valuations and taxation.
So if, if inflation is two and a half percent, I just did the math, over twenty-five years, if your taxes were ten thousand dollars, just hypothetically, it doesn't matter what amount it is, after twenty-five years now, they'd be eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. So basically, he's right. It's about eight, I mean, just inflation alone in twenty-five years has increased the cost of everything by eighty percent.
There's a reason why back in probably two thousand or so, you could probably buy and pick up for what, thirty or thirty-five, and now to pick up is seventy or seventy-five for the, you know, drop of lint. I mean, it's inflation and plus the cost of doing things, unfortunately, never seems to go down. It just continues to rise and rise and rise.
We want to try to keep them as low as possible, Ray.
That's our goal.
With still providing the level of services that people have come to expect. We appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, other thing I didn't think mentioned, I'm not anywhere near the dollar figures, but because the city, I don't know, we have talked about, because the city didn't approve an increase in the library budget, we can cut, we can cut nine thousand dollars out of the library budget. Not that that's, I mean, it's nine grand, but.
Any other questions? Lisa, anything you have?
No, I just thought I'd have more people here. I had more phone calls, but there's, they didn't show up.
Yeah, it's, uh.
It is what it is. I realize that.
Thanks for explaining that true and full value, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and I know when they see that figure go out or that percentage, sometimes those are hard to read.
Right.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to my office and check on, Raymond might qualify for a home stick credit, so we're gonna go check that out right now. Because I think at one time he maybe had it. We'll go check on him.
Check on half years.
Yeah. Since you're here.
And that's why we like Lisa. She thinks of things like that.
Thank you for. All along, Lisa.
Take care of him.
He might actually qualify for a refund.
Yeah, how about that?
I wish.
Very good, man.
Thank you very much.
So we should go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
If you think of any other questions you'd like to ask, don't hesitate to give any of us a call.
I think you're running a good kind of government as far as I'm concerned. I don't live here, but I, I think when I come to town, I got everything I need, so I'm happy.
Well, it's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to close the hearing then, or?
Yes, yeah.
How does it close the hearing?
I just wait because I'm, what are you guys jumping in?
Yeah, wait a moment, you start flipping a coin, it's through the secondary.
That's the second?
That important though.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Do.
Twenty twenty budget.
Do we want to make changes now so the budget is finalized when we come here in October?
That's a good idea. Damn good idea.
Well, at least the beginning of changes so we know where we're going.
So we get everybody to think about what we're gonna do and figure something to add when we get here in October.
I think your suggestions make perfect sense, yeah.
So twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two would make us about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So I think at a baseline, that's what we should look at. And then we would get nine thousand back from the library. So that gets us to about four hundred and ninety, give or take. So that's already underneath the mill level of last year.
Our office received a fight for and received another grant from the victims of crime, so we are getting thirty-six thousand eight hundred. In January, there's another grant that opens up that we're gonna apply for, and the award is five hundred thousand or more. Plus, there's another one in May that we're gonna apply for, and that's a two hundred and some thousand dollar chance of an award. So.
So what are those specifically for?
Um, those are toward programs through like pre-child diversion programs, adult drug court take programs.
So those are things we can do outside of our budget then?
Do outside of our budget and maybe divert people from jail into those programs to decrease the jail costs.
And we're looking for a gradator?
So, okay, no, this is the dehens one and Kim Perkun in the office, they are gradators. I am not a gradator.
Tell them we might send up some more.
Yeah, so this is, maybe you're getting the.
So does that thirty-seven thousand, is that in addition to your budget or is that gonna come out of the line or something?
Um, that gets, I think last year when we received it, it just went to the general fund. So what it's used for is we justify part of one of their legal salaries with it. So that had originally been in the budget. We got that much back for most of this already, so, yeah.
Not to, not to change the subject, but, you know, if, if we can get down to the mill levy rate that we were at last year, to me, that's probably what we should be targeting, only because one of the things that scares me is if we cut too much and then have to go up another, you know, another eighteen percent again or something like that. I mean, that, that really, that really causes a lot of pain and suffering. It's always, I think it's always more beneficial if you can say, yeah, I mean, we, we held fast this year and next year we might only need to go up, you know, two percent, or we might even hold fast another year. Then just cut, you know, ten percent more out of the budget and then you need your pound of flesh.
No, I agree.
Small incremental raises and, and cuts work out faster. And it eases that pain when that sticker shock comes in. And it eases that pain when that sticker shock comes in.
Well, and that's, that's why I like the idea of if we can get underneath that mill level just a little bit through that borrowing ahead because we're not cutting anything in the necessary expenditures on the budget lines and all of the other departments that we see. All we're doing is taking money we were gonna have previously to do a pro, or had that we're gonna do, use on a project anyway. It's, it's not gonna be, and then, and then the state money will come.
To me, that makes perfect sense, right? I'm just saying if, you know, before we go and start slashing through budgets, not that anybody's arguing that, I'm just getting it on the record that, that I think if we can just get it even...
I, I think, I think you're right. I mean, I, hopefully, we can comfortably stay with, with this, you know, the state payment now for, for social services with, with now increased state dollars coming, uh, hopefully fairly continuously for road upkeep and maintenance through this quarry dog deal. Hopefully, we can stay in that ninety, ninety-five to a hundred range fairly consistently would be the hope. Uh, you know, it's gonna, the, the cost of doing business is gonna continue to rise, but if valuations continue to inch up, you know, it'll kind of, hopefully, kind of hold steady in that, in that range. At least that's my, my hope.
Yeah, we can hold them, mill pretty steady and then the valuation is gonna go off.
They just mandate it.
We have no choice but to swallow that.
Well, as mill, um, as homes or property continues to change hands and those valuations increase or decrease, that's where those fluctuations will come in.
Yeah.
But I mean, there is, there is the other externality, which is, and not to, not to be the harbinger of doom and gloom here, but sooner or later, we're gonna have another recession. You know, and when, so I, I wouldn't take true and full valuation increases as a given either.
We'll see.
Yeah.
One of the comments I had with that approach, you put in, the guy was all right with it, but, you know, he says, well, look at the properties that you're, you know, gaining tax dollars on, all the houses along there. And if it was just a piece of black dirt before, you know, I mean, it's substantial to bring in, you know.
High-dollar homes in there.
So, you know, we didn't pay for the brooch and all we did is approve it, so. Sorry, too, I guess. They like where they're living, I guess.
You know, when we're talking about money, just for my own curiosity, did we ever hear any more from those lawyers over the drug lawsuit? I mean, they're all, they're all folding.
I'd be careful.
Be careful.
So actually, yeah, we, our suit was filed or been filed with us and submitted a email to Candy and I to get some documentation to them that they needed within what we thought was ninety days. Um, found out late Friday that, no, they need it by Thursday. So, um, yes.
Well, the ninety days got timed on real quick with what's, uh...
It's ninety days from the time they filed for them to have a deadline, submitted some information to, uh, to the federal courts there.
Because they think they're gonna file bankers. See, that was like the biggest one.
Purdue.
Purdue, yeah.
Well, that first, first wave.
Why? And all their money's hit overseas.
So needless to say, we're giving them their documentation by Thursday as best as we are able and they'll let us know.
And my mom's coming, no.
And so they, you know, Candy and I will be here tomorrow night for a while.
It rains all come, come, come like that.
I just saw that on TV, saw that. I'm gonna ask because, you know, I haven't heard nothing about it.
I had the same thing on my, my TV.
Attorney, attorney general, they're happy.
Yeah, both have a little more. They don't think settlement figure.
Yeah, I don't really see that coming very late, so.
Well, the problem is that the family that wholly owns the company is worth in the vicinity of sixteen billion and they're only gonna pay three. What were they hitting sixteen billion from? Obviously, if they had some of it previous to all of this occurring, but...
Well, then is this just Purdue?
It's just Purdue.
Because this, right, this, this lawsuit stretches across all kinds of, uh, and relatively speaking, I think Purdue pharmaceuticals wasn't, I mean, it's relatively speaking, I think it was a strong reaction. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I thought it was the only one, one of that list.
I don't remember it. If we pull that out, um, there were several now. But Purdue was the top, I thought, so.
Regardless, there, there, all those companies see the right one, well, they're all gonna settle now because they lost in Oklahoma, Johnson and Johnson lost in Oklahoma and...
One would...
You know, they're all losing, they're losing jury trials. They're all gonna settle now. It's just a matter of how can these hopefully stay in business. It's their thought, I'm sure.
Just a thought. To, to add to that, I, I was pretty proud on the resolutions committee. The NACO added an opioid, uh, a state opioid response request to their set of resolutions at, at my prompting. Since we've got a prompt, seeing as it's related to just constable.
Well, since we're related to drugs. At the next meeting, I'm probably gonna forward some information to Candy as it relates to civil asset forfeitures. And you're looking for some sort of opinion from the commission on what to do with monies that are received through the forfeiture process with some new, new legislation that was had, so.
Whose, whose hands are it in now?
Well, right now, it was set up through an MOU, through the task force in the different counties. And so there was a portion that went to this agency, that agency, then the county got a portion. And then the county portion, I think, was initially going into the general fund, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and so now we look at setting it up in its own specific account and have somebody else at the commission be involved with the board saying, kind of directing where that money would go. Like law enforcement type request for that money.
Yeah, I'll be...
Um, my office will be submitting a very detailed report annually to the attorney general's office about where that money goes, so.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a good way to track it.
Okay, how do you solve it for, for drug task force?
Right, and, and that's kind of what we're looking for. And I think what most states attorneys were asking the commissions for was, um, the idea that those funds would be used for law enforcement purpose.
That makes sense.
Makes sense. Candy, what do you think? Where are we at here? Are you all right with it or?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to take some rock to this, so.
Thanks. Um, I know I did, I marked in my budget book some, um, like, we haven't used any guardian ad lata money in three, four years. It's like forty-two hundred dollars, so we can, we can cut it. The other, you know...
Didn't you have one last year?
No.
No.
Okay.
Oh, that, okay.
Seventeen was the last.
Somebody, somebody's... What? Who's guardian money?
It's a person that's appointed by the court to look after the interests of somebody who either is like a minor or they're a vulnerable adult or something like that, comes through court proceeding.
I think the one that we had was like an elderly...
Well, I would keep some.
Yes.
And the reason I say that is because I think that there is a much more active look by different agencies as it relates to vulnerable adults. So in the last year, I've had three referred to, um, ones going forward, so.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I think you should keep at least some of it.
I got a...
I think, I think it's reasonable to keep it in there simply because, I mean, it's, if it goes on spend, it just goes to the general and it's not like it's a two hundred thousand, I don't know, it's, you know, forty-three hundred.
So what, 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 where are we at if we make the two cuts that we had, Ken, then?
Well, my only question is gonna be, so Kevin, are you okay with doing that ahead, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two?
As long as I go for bill money's there and it looks really positive, so yeah.
It'll be there.
Yeah, I mean, worst case scenario, basically, we're, we're taking two hundred and forty thousand dollars that would be on that project for the Hammond Road, you know, and, and if, if that whole quarry dog money doesn't show up, I mean, we can deal with it, but it's not like two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's, you know, a huge hole. We can deal with it as it comes, so. Well, I mean, at, at that case, if Kevin's okay with that, then we would, we would ask for two years ahead then. So twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, that would be in the vicinity of that hopefully four hundred and eighty thousand with another ten from the library gets us to four ninety. So we'd be basically a little bit down from last year's mills, but probably about halfway between where last year's mill rate was, or excuse me, yeah, last year's mill rate was and, uh, last year's actual budget. So we'd be decreasing mills slightly, but still above last year's budget number without catching some of the value of the capture.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I, I...
And I, and I did get information, it was sent out like ten after five from Blue Cross.
Okay, and that, yeah, that was gonna be mine, my, one of my questions. Do we have anything lying in?
So I'll print all that out then. Because they, they had, um, they went with higher deductibles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was, that would, like I said, that, that hole we have in the budget essentially is off, off books from this. So that's a decision that we need to make, but it doesn't have to be made right this minute. It's not gonna affect the actual budget number, so.
Because I have them do like five hundred and a thousand.
Okay, well then, I guess I'll make the motion to, uh, direct Kevin to ask for two years ahead on the federal aid funding, uh, for, for the Highway Two project and then also cut that nine thousand dollars from the library budget to, uh, give us our presented budget for, for this project.
I'll second that.
A motion in the second, without effect, recall it's a potential agreement or what? Or just leave it like that for the hall?
I don't know.
We don't have to finalize it.
No, it's not, it's not a finalization. Yeah, it's just, it's just an update from the budget that's presented there. Get those two years and that nine thousand cut and then that'll be the presented budget that first meeting.
Okay.
So then that'll keep me in a verse to work with.
Yeah.
A motion in the second, all clear, is the eye?
Aye.
All, all the motion carried.
Yeah, and Kevin can talk to the state, get the actual number to Candy and...
Yeah, I don't think getting a positive. There's a change there here.
But we can ballpark it because we, we've got enough money in the, in the, your funding to... It's ten or fifteen million for something like that.
Okay, visitors, delegations, anything there? Announcements? How about that? New announcements?
Uh, workbenchers were here.
Pardon me?
State dockers were here.
Okay. That was...
Still here?
Still here? Are they?
I'm still here. I'm still here.
I didn't hear it all.
No, we, uh, they, you know, they were, they were pleased with all the information that we were able to provide beforehand. You know, emails coming from the treasurer's office, my office to give them so that they could work on it ahead of time. So they were only here for, um, uh...
They, they had?
Let me see. I got it here, Monday at quarter to ten and they left today at...
Eleven.
Eleven fifteen.
Yep. Quick, all right, yeah. Good, good. I'm happy.
I, I met with them on behalf of the commission that they did the process with me. Um, answered the, the questions that they had. Uh, one of the things that they recommended that we do as a county is establish a fraud risk assessment committee just to look at potential areas that fraud could be committed kind of thing. And then that would be the only thing that they would recommend. You know, that all county, they're asking counties or political subdivisions to do. And a couple members of the commission and, um, a few members of...
Department heads or something.
Department heads and maybe a member of the public or something like that. Just, uh, look at the overall potential of where the potential could lie.
Well, let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, they're, they're sending paperwork.
Oh.
They're sending paperwork.
Oh, sorry.
Well, whenever you get some paperwork.
Yeah, well, in that case, that's number one.
They'll set guidelines and, uh...
Let's not set something up where they have more meetings.
But, but that's the only, only thing that they gave as far as a recommendation. And I said, you know, there, you, you know, there's never an indication. I would, I would trust everybody here with anything, everything and, uh, you know, no... You know, but you never, in this day and age, I guess you never say never. Um, you know, it, it seems to me there's something surprising and means almost on a daily, weekly basis kind of thing. And, um, even though everybody here, you have trust with your baby secret kids and those kind of things, but, uh, and I can't imagine anybody ever doing anything like that. But I guess if they want you to take a look at the potential, whatever risks they're...
Yeah, they're, they're telling us to do it. You better set it up.
Yeah, so it's a reasonable expectation, I guess, is to set a committee up and see where we can improve our, our oversight kind of thing.
Okay, anything else?
I'm gonna tell them our calls don't sound like anybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, thank you.
The only thing I was gonna mention quickly is, uh, we are going to have our second zone board possible meeting thingy. Putting together the zone next Wednesday, if this calendar is correct. So, uh, we'll hammer out the details and hopefully we'll have, that first meeting in October will have some type of, uh, or maybe the second meeting, Mark, we'll see how it looks, some type of a track agreement to look at.
Wednesday, you said?
Next Wednesday, at ten o'clock.
Ten?
Yes.
Same place?
Same, same, same bad place, same bad place.
Okay, motion void during, how about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm aiming.
I'm gonna hurry you on the second phone.
Second.
Good, we're done. Thank you.